Testing.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, this one's working too. All right, thank you. So I'll start again. I'm Gail Brewer, Manhattan Borough President, and I want to welcome you all to our hearing on the Blood Center. And I am delighted that so many people have turned out. I don't think I need to describe for anyone that the New York Blood Center is a really important institution in our city on many different levels. They have applied for a rezoning on their 67th Street location on the East Side as part of the ULRP process. And I want to thank many of you in the audience who've been participating on many levels for your input and for your ideas on all levels. I particularly want to thank Hunter College, you know, in this time of COVID, we're not over it yet. It isn't every institution that offers the public the opportunity to come and use their site. And I want to thank the staff of Hunter College and particularly President Jennifer Rabb. A big round of applause for Hunter. I suppose I should declare that I do teach here, but I also want to say as an institution, as we clap, it does a great deal for the students in the City of New York. And certainly President Rabb makes a huge effort for those amazing students. There are so many different concerns. I know that you will bring them to our attention. We are, I wanted to say it's not just the height, which is what you sometimes hear that that's what people are concerned about, but it's not just that. And I know that Community Board Eight's recommendation, and I'll let the Chair talk about their recommendation. But I think it's partly that we want to be clear that mid-block zoning is not necessarily something that we want to tamper with. And we are also concerned about the park, St. Catherine's Park. I know that it is sometimes possible to mitigate shadows and shadows might seem to those who are not using the park as something that isn't a big deal. But it is a big deal. It is a big deal, and it isn't something that I think even the Parks Department can find a way to mitigate. So it is an issue. And it's also, right across the street is the very well-known and respected Julia Richmond Education Complex. So these are issues that are of concern. On the other hand, I know we have fabulous union members, union representatives here tonight. I want to thank them for being here. I always appreciate the work that they do. And I know that we want them to be working as often and as mightily for our city without the union and the construction. We do not have a city coming back, and I want to thank you for that. So you can see that we in our office will be participating in the Uniform Land Use Review Procedure known as ULRP. And that's why we're having this hearing here tonight to hear from you, not from me, but from you. So our first speaker is going to be Councilmember Ben Kalos. Councilmember, the floor is yours. And after that, we'll hear from Assemblymember Rebecca Seawright. He's been very humble and being with the people. Thank you, Councilmember.
It's where I like to be, Gail, for President Gail Brewer. I want to thank you for holding this public forum at your discretion, and you did not have to do it. And I appreciate the fact that you're doing this. Also, it's kind of amazing to be for the first time in person for a public hearing. I want to thank so many people for coming out and making sure their voices were heard. I need to thank the Community Board. They've had hearing after hearing on this topic for, I think, half of my life. No, it's true. And hundreds of neighbors who keep coming out over and over and over again at every single opportunity to make their voices heard. And I also have to thank our, she's not here tonight, but I told her I'd be talking about her behind her back. Our State Senator Liz Krueger, who has been fighting this since before I was elected. She continues to fight by my side. She's on the side of the community every day, and she's not going anywhere. And before I get into too many details, I just want to say, I think everyone I've spoken to in the community is very happy and proud of the work that they do at the Blood Center and would really love to see the Blood Center expand. It's only two or three stories right now. It's only 20 or so feet tall. They're legally allowed to be 75 feet tall. They could triple or quadruple their existing square footage as of right, and that is something that I think the entire community would support. And if they would just do so, we wouldn't all be here tonight and have spent almost the entire last year having this conversation. The Blood Center's commercial tower would block sunshine from St. Catherine's Park. Now, Community Board Eight actually has the lowest. It ranks third up in the bottom third of community districts with a park within five-minute walk. In fact, St. Catherine's Park is one of the only parks areas in the neighborhood. 24 Sycamores is half a kilometer away. John Jay is three-quarters a kilometer away. Central Park is one kilometer away. Suffice to say that if it's not a quick five-minute walk, you're talking about a day trip for a family. And so I just have to say, as a new father, playgrounds are a part of life and no more so than during the pandemic, particularly with a daughter too young for a vaccine. Neighborhood playgrounds have been a needed refuge throughout this pandemic, albeit it's been stressful because it's so crowded. And it's odd that the Blood Center, which was at the forefront of convalescent plasma therapy during this pandemic, would not value the importance of public spaces that are safe from spreading the disease. And I was shocked when I saw a shadow study that would leave St. Catherine's Park completely in the shadows for much of the day, starting at 1:30 PM in May before Memorial Day, continuing through August and the summer. And as a parent, those are prime time hours. And when it gets dark out, when it's those shadows come, that's when your kids say it's time to go home. And I think it adds insult to injury to have the Blood Center say that somehow the trees in the park aren't enough for shade and that somehow leaving the park in shade from 1 o'clock on is somehow a positive. That's, that's just insulting the community. The Blood Center would have a negative impact on Julia Richmond, starting with the construction and continuing for once it's built. Those children would never be able to see light. We asked about during the scoping session about the impact of light in classrooms, and we still haven't heard back. We haven't heard what the impact of years and years of construction will be on the children in the spectrum. And Ella Baker is actually our most diverse school in the City of New York, and it is a beacon, something that is just very nerdy. This is for the zoning nerds out there. You're not actually legally allowed to build a tower called a height factor across the street from a park. It's in the zoning resolution at 2365 C. And it's in a public park over an acre, and it's either 100 feet or across the street, and it's illegal. This tower is illegal under the zoning code. And the only way that they're trying to do it is they're trying to say, oh, it's not going to be residential anymore. It's going to be commercial. But that's just going to let people start creating new loopholes all over the city. And now you're going to have towers being built across from parks in a neighborhood near you. And so when it comes to it, another piece is Gail Brewer, our Borough President, and I fought incredibly hard to make sure that any new rezoning should include affordable housing. And it doesn't get more cynical than rezoning from a residential district to a commercial district in a residential neighborhood just to get away from having to build affordable housing for low-income New Yorkers who need it. And so that's just wrong, especially when we're talking about being eight blocks away from the commercial district, which has millions of square feet of empty space. And so there's other places they can build. We literally have a hole in the ground at 74th Street.
Really? I think I know where that hole is.
It's at 74th Street. Sotheby's, just two blocks away, has been for sale multiple times, looking for a buyer like the Blood Center. And in fact, we have the Proton Center sitting in East Harlem, completely empty at the same time as this mayor says he wants to invest in the communities of color that were so harmed by this pandemic. But somehow that's not good enough for the Blood Center. We heard a lot about partnerships, how they have to be right here because of all of their partnerships. We heard from Marty Bell about how most of their partnerships aren't even near New York City. They're actually international. If you ask any of the institutions, they have something called the Tri-Institutional Therapeutic Development Initiative. And notably missing from that is the Blood Center. Rockefeller University built a new campus. We're doing a $9 million incubator with them. But missing from this again is the Blood Center. There don't seem to be many institutions in the neighborhood that want to partner with them. There's a big issue here with the precedents. We have the RAP mid-block, which Friends of the Upper East Side Historic District fought for in the 80s. And now they just want to blow it away and say we can go anywhere and get rid of it. Ultimately, this is about zoning for dollars. And that's not what zoning is supposed to be there for. It's supposed to build homeless shelters. It's supposed to build schools, firehouses. That's what zoning is for. It's not there to print money.
You need to wrap up, Councilmember.
You got it. When it comes to the funding, the Blood Center hasn't demonstrated that they need the money. In fact, when I've looked at their 990s, all I've seen is executives making millions of dollars at the same time as the institution's been buying other blood centers all over the country for tens, if not hundreds, of millions of dollars. This is an institution that has the money to do it now without us printing the money. And I just want to just say in terms of this, the Blood Center first came before me in 2006 when I was on Community Board Eight. Then a young woman named Elizabeth Rose was fighting out about it. You can read about it in the New York Times. In 2016, I met with our Assemblymember Rebecca Seawright, our Borough President Gail Brewer, our State Senator Liz Krueger, and the principals at Julia Richmond Education Complex, who were formed by Deputy Mayor Alicia Glenn, that it was a done deal, that there was going to be a land swap, and there was nothing we could do. I reached out, said I was going to vote against it and kill it with member deference. I know that Senator Liz Krueger reached out to City Hall. I know that our Borough President Gail Brewer reached out, and we were able to stop it then. Then in 2018 and 2019, they came back and we said no again. That was three strikes. Then in October, they came back and said this is that they were moving forward without any support against community opposition. The Community Board has heard from them November 17th, December 8th, January 26th, April 27th, May 13th, May 18th, May 25th. Every meeting, hundreds of attendees spoke out against the project, and board members voted unanimously in opposition to the project. I'm urging you, Borough President Gail Brewer, to vote against and recommend disapproval of this project. And I'm asking the Blood Center to voluntarily withdraw this project and listen to the community. And if they don't, the City Planning Commission should vote it down. And in closing, if this proposal should find its way to the Council, let me share a quote for inspiration from Gandalf the Grey in The Fellowship of the Rings, Book Two, Chapter Five, as he confronts the Orcs and the Balrog at the Bridge of Kazadu. "You cannot pass. I am a servant of the secret fire, wielder of the flame of a Nord. You cannot pass. The dark fire will not avail you. Flame of a dude, go back to the shadow. You cannot pass."
Thank you very much. Next, we have the honor of hearing from Assemblymember Rebecca Seawright.
Well, thank you. And let's give another quick round of applause to our Manhattan Borough President, Gail Brewer. I call her our modern-day Eleanor Roosevelt. She is a She-Ro. Hello and good evening to all of you and welcome to all of you that are joined tonight for this, against this outrageous and unjustifiable threat to our quality of life of our community. I want to thank all of you for showing up. I know we're threatening rain and thunderstorms outside, but I commend you for coming this evening and voicing your opinion. Enough is enough. The New York Blood Center is a highly valued neighbor, and our community has always supported their vital work and mission. However, this plan to demolish the low-rise headquarters on East 67th Street and build a massive 33-story high-rise commercial office is poorly conceived and not in the best interests of our community. This proposal, thank you, makes a mockery. This proposal makes a mockery of our hard-fought and sensible zoning rules that protect mid-block locations from massive towers, oversaturation, and unnecessary intrusions that threaten our health and safety. You all know about traffic congestion here. We are at the breaking point, but that is just the beginning. This megastructure will attract up to 2,500 daily employees. Did you hear that? That's 550,000 more people flooding into East 67th Street every month. The size and bulk of the shaft will cast dark shadows over St. Catherine's Park, a neighborhood jewel, and the sanctuary of sunlight. The six schools housed at the JRECK, Julia Richmond Education Complex, one of which teaches students with autism, will lose its ambient light, which has proven to be necessary in the well-being of our children. So it does not make any sense to allow a design so close to our schools and play spaces to include biosafety Level III laboratories. I've said it before. I was pleased to testify at the Community Board and pleased that you voted a resolution against it. We have not heard enough from the developer to justify this expansion. Such behavior is unacceptable. But let it also be a warning for us. If we relax our opposition, if we let down our guard to this threat, more ill-conceived proposals will follow. So let's keep the pressure on. Let's carry on with the fight. Thank you for showing up and speaking. I look forward to hearing from you this evening.
Thank you very much, Assemblymember. And now we're very, very honored to have Representative Carolyn Maloney. Thank you very much, Congresswoman, for being here.
Thank you. I would like to thank the community for coming out and supporting our neighborhood, being here tonight and being at the many meetings and planning sessions that we've had on this. I particularly would like to thank our extraordinary Manhattan Borough President, Gail Brewer, for allowing me to testify today as part of an official Uniform Land Use Review Procedure. And I have detailed comments on that, which I would like to put into the record of this event. But I would like to make a few statements, short statements, as I know the program will be long. I have long supported the laudable work of the Blood Center and recognize the limitations of its current space. But I do not believe that this project is the appropriate solution for the Blood Center and certainly not for the neighborhood. After a grueling 14 months of COVID crisis, we need to focus on rebuilding our community, not building on top of it. The proposed 16-story building would change the entire landscape of this and our community and our neighborhood. 60% of the building would be controlled by a private developer and includes labs that are specifically designed to handle dangerous, very dangerous pathogens that are similar to the virus responsible for the current global pandemic. That's just not appropriate. It's irresponsible when this location is surrounded by schools, parks, and thousands of people's homes. The modification of the R8B zoning threatens this neighborhood and sets a dangerous precedent for other developers looking to build super-talls with little benefit for the people or the neighborhood. When every elected official, every community group, and every community board opposes a project, that tells you something. This is one of the most densely populated neighborhoods in the entire city, and we just don't have the capacity to handle the increase in both density and traffic that a 16-story building would bring, which is violating the zoning laws. Increased traffic would also pose a serious risk to the thousands of children who play at St. Catherine's Park and attend school in the Julia Richmond Educational Complex. I want to reiterate that I don't oppose the work of the Blood Center, but I do think they need to go back to the drawing boards when it comes to this project. We need open dialogue and constructive engagement to reach a proposal that works for our neighbors and the Blood Center. Because if they don't, we won't. We won't stop fighting to stop this proposal. Since my days in the City Council, I have worked diligently with my neighbors to preserve our historic residential community. Therefore, I strongly oppose the rezoning application for 310 East 67th Street. And I ask unanimous consent to place more information, letters, and others that I have written in opposition to this plan, and I yield back. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Congresswoman. Thank you. And now I'm going to call, and I want respect for the New York Blood Center. If you'd like to come up, whomever is speaking for the Blood Center and be able to address the group. And after that, we'll have the Coalition, but we welcome the New York Blood Center here. Thank you very much. You're welcome to come up, whomever the representative is. Thank you. Mr. Silver, if you want to come up, or do you want to speak from there, whatever you prefer? Okay.
Thank you. Yeah. Okay. Representative Maloney, Assemblymember Seawright, Councilmember Kalos. I'm Paul Silver, member of the firm of Kramer Levin, Neftalis, and Frankel. We're a land use council to the New York Blood Centers. And I'm also someone who's very pleased to once again be able to present his client's case in real life. The reasons to approve the Center East proposal and its associated rezoning are both straightforward and simple. Center East would unite the Blood Center's need and vision for a new home and New York City's goal of becoming a national leader in the life sciences. Thus, the proposed action advanced four key public goals. They will give the Blood Center a new state-of-the-art home. They will create a world-class life sciences cluster and advance the city's policy of becoming a national life sciences center. And they will generate well-paying jobs and ensure that those jobs are filled in an equitable manner. You know, actually, we're, is that slide three? Okay, that's slightly, okay. The project fulfills the goal of New York City EDC's 2018 RFEI to expand the life sciences industry in New York City. New York City is far behind its peers in having available space and jobs for life sciences organizations.
Or talk into the mic at the same time, because they're having trouble hearing you. That's better. Thank you.
The San Francisco Bay Area has 15 times the amount of laboratory space, and the Boston Cambridge area has 19 times the amount of such space. Both areas also feature life science clusters where research institutions and product developments, companies operating in close proximity to each other, and hubs where both operate in a single building. While the amount of commercial life sciences space around the city has grown in recent years, there has not yet been a true hub. The Blood Center's experience with the East Side Biotechnology Accelerator has demonstrated that on a very small scale, life sciences companies are at their most productive when they work in close proximity to clinical and research facilities. Next slide, please. Moreover, the Blood Center's location allows it to develop a hub that capitalizes on the concentration of world-class hospitals and academic medical institutions in this area. Not to locate the proposed Center East here would be a lost opportunity to leverage the work of these institutions. Next slide, please. The Blood Center is not a developer. Its mission is ensuring safe blood supply for New York City and elsewhere and engaging in research that can lead to treatments and cures for a wide range of diseases. So to build a new home, and especially one that includes space for commercial life sciences companies, it needed to partner with a developer. Next slide, please. The Blood Center chose Longfellow Real Estate Partners, a leading nationwide life sciences developer, because it has the necessary expertise in building and operating laboratory buildings and in fostering life sciences communities. Next slide, please. The project will be developed and operated with goals of ensuring both that all workers receive a fair and living wage and that employment will reflect the diverse cross-section of New Yorkers. To that end, the project will be built with union labor under PLAs with the Building and Construction Trades, Council of Greater New York, and Local 79 of the Laborers Union. It will establish and meet MWBE goals during construction, and it will be a non-traditional employment for women's signature project, where 15% of the work hour goals during construction will be reserved for women. The Blood Center will build on its experience in internship programs and together with Longfellow, will develop education and workforce development programs involving both the Blood Center and the building occupants. These programs will recruit high school students from diverse backgrounds and train college students to pursue meaningful STEM careers. The Blood Center has also, at the suggestion of the Borough President, engaged in discussions with the City University of New York to formulate initiatives to support careers in the life sciences. It has created new partnerships with both high schools and workforce development organizations, such as BioBus Knowledge House and the New York City Employment Training Coalition. Next slide, please. Actually, now let's skip to the next one. I missed one. Okay, thank you. You've heard it said that the rezoning will somehow spell the death of R8 mid-block zoning as we know it, and is a spot zone. Neither claim is accurate. There has been one R8B mid-block that has been rezoned, that 2018 rezoning to R8A to facilitate affordable housing development on the Upper West Side. Significantly, that development did not cause the sky to fall. This is because each rezoning stands on its own merits. Here, there is a unique confluence of factors, an important city policy, an immediately available site, a site with unique physical characteristics and history. More specifically, the MIBC site has proximity to other world-class medical and academic institutions, is about a five-minute walk from three subway lines that connect it to Midtown and Lower Manhattan, means the Bronx and Brooklyn, is uniquely suited to redevelopment of life sciences by reason of its size, its shape, and its history of non-residential use. Next slide, please. It's also not on a typical R8B block. Half of the mid-block not occupied by the Blood Center is developed with 12-story buildings built to about a FAR, or double the residential density of R8B. It's also in an area with numerous tall mid-block buildings ranging from 12 to 30 stories. Within 1,000 feet of the Blood Center site, there are six mid-block buildings taller than 200 feet, two of which are close to or above the proposed height of Center East. There isn't another site on the Upper East Side or on the Upper West Side that has this combination of factors. Nor is this a spot zone. Whether or not a spot zone exists does not depend on the size of the area rezoned. To the contrary, the Court of Appeals has said both that a rezoning is not invalid because it involves only a single parcel and that the test of whether it is in accordance, the test of whether it is a spot zone or not is whether it is in accordance with a well-considered plan for the general welfare of the city. Thus, the New York County Supreme Court, in a 2015 case, Residents for Reasonable Development versus New York City upheld the rezoning of a 46,000-square-foot parcel in the East 73rd Street mid-block to C19 with educational and medical use against a claim of spot zoning. And I'm almost done. Next slide, please. It's the last one. Here, the proposed rezoning will implement four key public policy objectives, is appropriate for the area given the urban context, and allows for the use of the only site in the neighborhood capable of providing sufficient, properly-shaped footprint for life sciences, a life sciences hub, without displacing existing residents. And finally, it will be the product both of a careful study and an extended and thoughtful consideration studied by the Department of City Planning and by HRNA and Urbanism Advisors, who produced the report that recommended the rezoning as proposed in consideration during a two-year pre-certification process by the Community Board, by the Borough President, by the City Planning Commission, and by the City Council during ULRP. And last, I want to close by stating that, for the record, that we have heard the Community Board's issues clearly. We're looking for ways to respond to them without compromising either the programmatic objectives of Center East for the Blood Center or the benefits it offers the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Silver. I appreciate it. And it's not easy with this crowd, but it's also lots of facts, and I appreciate it. So thank you very much. If we had time, we would do questions, but we don't. So we're going to keep moving. Now I want to hear from the Coalition to stop the Blood Center Tower. And you're welcome, whomever that is, to come up if you want or to speak from here. Rachel, do you want to come up, or do you want to speak from there?
I'll just speak from here.
Okay, talk right into the.
I will. I will.
Thank you. Go ahead.
So I'm just going to keep saying next slide.
You could introduce yourself.
Okay, sure. Yes. Good evening. Thank you, Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, for hosting this hearing. It's great to be here. I'm Rachael Levy. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of. It's great to be here. I'm Rachael Levy. I'm the Executive Director of Friends of the Upper East Side Historic Districts. We're working closely with a coalition of civic groups and neighborhood associations, individuals and neighborhood buildings neighboring the Blood Center to oppose this project. And so I just want to share some more images of what the project will look like, talk a little bit about the R8B zoning in particular and its history. So this is what the project will look like in context across from Julia Richmond Educational Complex and St. Catherine's Park. Next slide. This, of course, is the current Blood Center building. Sorry, it's going to be very visual. The Blood Center has been here since 1968 and the building is three and a half stories. It complies with the R8B mid-block zoning that is designed to preserve the low-scale kind of five to seven-story tenement scale that's typically found on Upper East Side mid-blocks. Next slide. And this is what the mid-block looks like. It shouldn't be a surprise to you. It's a really intrinsic quality of not just the Upper East Side, but the entire city where you have low-scale residential and associated uses on the mid-blocks, on the side streets punctuated by taller buildings on the avenues. And so this is the 67th Street elevation and then next is the 66th Street elevation. Next slide, please. Because this block, this lot goes all the way through from 67th through to 68th Streets. Next slide. And this zoning on the Upper East Side is not an accident. It was systematically adopted in the 1980s reflecting the existing context after the community rose together and asked the city for a solution. In response, the city studied every single mid-block in the 1980s on the Upper East Side within Community District Eight and evaluated compliance with this R8B envelope. Here are some of their findings. I won't read all of this, but one of, one in particular that I want to call out is that they identify that the mid-blocks have a strong and identifiable sense of enclosure, scale and coherence. They form enclaves within the larger community and offer a quiet refuge from the, from the busier avenues. And at the time, 90% of mid-block structures in the study area were compatible with this R8B envelope. Next slide, please, including the Blood Center site. It's important to note, on the Upper East Side, every R8B district that was mapped in 1985 is still R8B. This would be the very first rezoning of an R8B district on the Upper East Side. It was based on a well-considered land use plan that's been in place for 35-plus years. It's important to note also that certain blocks were omitted from the R8B zoning. You can see in the red on the map, certain areas between, south of 72nd Street, between First and York and Avenues were omitted in recognition of larger institutional uses. The Blood Center complied and it was not one of these areas that was omitted. Next slide. The R8B zoning has also not been an impediment to other similar medical uses. These are two MSK buildings that were developed successfully within R8B in the last couple of years. Next. And this is what the Blood Center could do if they proceeded with an as-of-right proposal. They could still adequately house the Blood Center's program. It would be a 44% larger building than the existing building. And in fact, it would provide 10% more community facility space than the, of the proposed building. You can see it right opposite the Julia Richmond Complex and St. Catherine's Park. Next. This is what they're proposing. This is how, how out of context it will look in the neighborhood. Next slide. As you've heard, only a third of the building will be occupied by the Blood Center. The other two-thirds will be owned by Longfellow, a private real estate developer with commercial partners introducing new commercial uses onto this residential block. Next. And part of the reason aside from the height that it would have this impact is the floor plate. And so this is a comparison of the Blood Center floor plate to other tall buildings on the Upper East Side. Right? So we're not saying that there aren't other tall buildings. This is the Carlisle Hotel, 1059 Third Avenue, Solo Tower just across the street. And you can see that as buildings get taller, typically they get smaller and the floor plate gets narrower and narrower and that's to preserve light and air to the street. Next. This is the floor plate of the Blood Center building as proposed compared to Midtown Commercial Office Building. So we're looking at 10 Hudson Yards, one Vanderbilt. This is the scale of building that we're talking about, that would have really no place on the Upper East Side. Next. Then there's St. Catherine's Park and Julie Richmond across the street. I thought it was important to get a sense of what those resources look like when they're heavily used, full of students and families throughout the day. Next slide. And as Councilmember Kalos noted, it's the only park within a half-mile radius. Next slide. The shadows that it will cast will be enormous, especially on the afternoon peak, hours of usage for students and families. Next slide. And we can measure the change in natural light that will be felt in, after this project is built. And so we can see here in the dark blue that portions of 67th Street and 66th Street will lose more than 50% of their natural light. And I'm wrapping it up. Keep going. Sorry, next slide. So we know that, you know, the city has prioritized growth of life sciences as a strategic goal for the city. Next slide. And in 2018, there was an RFE put out for similar development on three city-owned sites. You've heard about them from Councilmember Kalos, the one in East Harlem adjacent to the Proton Center, as well as two others. Next slide. But there are also less impactful onsite alternatives within the R8B envelope that could be considered. So this is the existing building. Next slide. This is the as-of-right option shown in the DEIS that would be preserving the R8B envelope, but it's splitting the building into two wings due to yard and coverage requirements. And so this, this alternative, which would breathe the no-action alternative, is still 44% larger than the existing. Next slide. But this shows what, what they might be able to do if the yard FAR restrictions and coverage requirements were waived, but the overall envelope of the R8B was maintained. What you see here is a building that's 41% larger than the no-action alternative, double the size of the existing building and is, I think, a viable alternative. Next slide. So overall, you know, there are alternatives that would allow the Blood Center to expand, modernize and continue its work without compromising long-held land use policy. Ultimately, the Blood Center is seeking a spot zoning for pure financial benefit and they're proposing commercial uses in the middle of this residential neighborhood. Land use decisions should be made according to land use plans and zoning shouldn't be used to subsidize private organizations. There are also serious questions remaining about the safety of the BSL3 labs that would be placed here, including the refusal of the Department of Health recently to release a list of such facilities because of a risk to public safety. And so if the city wants to expand the life sciences industry, it should do that, but it should focus on sites that, that were identified by the city and where this use and mass is appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. You're always very articulate. So now we're going to call on Russell Squire, who is the Chair of Community Board Eight. And then we're going to call on a couple of union members and then Julie Menon. So first we'll have Russell Squire and then a couple of union members.
Thank you. I'm Russell Squire, Chair of Community Board Eight, Manhattan. I'm speaking in opposition to the New York Blood Center Longfellow proposal. I want to thank Borough President Gail Brewer for all that she has done to back up the community on this issue and for allowing me the opportunity to speak here this evening. At the outset, it is important to note that this proposal remains completely unchanged from the first time it was presented to CB8 last November. Since that time, the Community Board and its committees have had multiple meetings on this subject and expressed many concerns. The Blood Center and Longfellow have not changed the project, the project, one iota in response to those concerns. That in itself is shocking and indicative of the disregard for community concerns and quality of life that characterizes this proposal. CB8 opposes this project for several reasons, which are set forth more fully in our resolution and supporting materials which we have submitted to your office, but I'll briefly address some of them. First, the proposal is totally unacceptable from a zoning perspective. The proposal would undo mid-block R8B zoning that the community wishes to preserve. R8B zoning is a shining example of city planning done right in a way that is responsive to the community and reflective of its needs and preferences. If this rezoning of an R8B district in the face of community opposition goes forward, it will jeopardize R8B zoning everywhere in Manhattan. The hard-won success of R8B zoning should be preserved, not undermined. The proposal also constitutes impermissible spot zoning. The applicant's attempts to tack on gratuitous changes to other lots do not change that fact. Second, the proposal would permanently and irremediably impact St. Catherine's Park, cherished open space in an area of the city that sorely lacks it. Most of the year, the proposed tower would cast shadows over most or all of the park during the afternoon hours when children use the park the most. There is no way to mitigate a loss of sunlight. Nothing can be done to bring back sunlight once it is lost. Third, the proposed tower would cast prolonged and significant shadows over the Julia Richmond Education Complex, known as JRECK, which has students from all over the city, not just the Upper East Side. The shadow is particularly problematic for the significant number of autistic students at JRECK as sunlight is very important for those students. Fourth, the proposed project would be vastly out of proportion with the rest of the neighborhood. This would be so even if it were on an avenue, but on a mid-block site, it is doubly inappropriate. Finally, I cannot overstate the degree of local community opposition to this project that we have seen in the Community Board. Every single meeting of a CB8 committee or the full board that has looked at this has been packed to capacity with neighborhood residents expressing strong and united opposition to this proposal. CB8 also solicited written comments from members of the public as part of our review and those were overwhelmingly opposed to the project. In sum, the Community Board, community organizations and local residents are united in saying that we care about our sunlight, we care about our open space, we care about our quality of life and we are going to continue to show up to fight for them.
Thank you very much. Next, I'm going to call on Justice Faber and then Monette Maradi because I have great respect. Is Justice here, Faber? Great, thank you. And then Monette Maradi. Take your time, Justice.
Give these guys a key for their park bill. With all due respect, my name is Justice Faber. I'm an organizer for Local 79. Represent about roughly 10,000 members. And 80% of them are people of color who live throughout the whole five boroughs. I worked on a plethora of rezonings and then depending on where you end up at, the tone, the tone is different. There's a lot of innuendos. Even from electives, right? She sat up there and spoke about pathogens. And we know that this Blood Center is going to be targeting some of, some type of treatments for sickle cell and things that specifically impacted people of color. So, you know, and this is a city that should be about everybody, not just everybody operating in silos and like build over here, but don't build here. Like, and I get it, right? I come up from a community where we didn't have equity in terms of decision-making and our parks, they just build around our parks and we got along, but I say that with respect though, so.
Put me in charge of your parks.
But I just want to say that I'm here to express Local 79's support for the development of New York Blood Center and its life sciences facility that will benefit the entire city and create thousands of family, sustaining jobs for New Yorkers of color and low-income household. The Blood Center is the leading supplier of blood to the area of hospitals and works to develop curses and cures and treatments for sickle cell and other diseases impacting Black New Yorkers and other New Yorkers of color. The developers have committed to working with Local 79 to ensure this project supports our communities, not only with medical services, but also by building with union jobs that provide family health benefits. Additionally, they are partnering with local education institutions to train, recruit and place New Yorkers from diverse backgrounds to, into life sciences jobs at Center East. Opponents of this project complain that new people will crowd their space. We think that people, we think, we think that people like our members, New Yorkers of color, public housing residents or immigrants looking to work in the up-east side medical corridor or simply to seek medical care should be welcomed, not kept out and excluded. Center East can boost wages for residents of East Harlem, South Bronx, Queensbridge and other neighborhoods hit hard by COVID. City government cannot afford to allow opposition from wealthy elites to stand in the way of thousands of family sustaining jobs for communities and lifesaving cures and treatments. We understand, once you create something, something is taken away. But in my, my humble opinion, I believe the good will outweigh the bad, right? We know that when cars were created, carbon emission killed. I mean, it polluted the air, but we know how important vehicles is to our community. And just have more of an open mind. It's, this is just not one community operating, just one community. This is New York City. This is not just the Upper East Side and I get it, I understand that some things, again, you know, may, I may not understand what a shadow was like casting. I get it. I'm learning some new things as well. But I think folks should have more of an open mind and understand we're speaking about the city. And New York, sometimes we are the biggest hypocrites, right? We act like we're so progressive and we're uplifting people, but not in our backyard though, like not in our building. But thank you for your time.
Thank you very much and we love Local 79. Thank you so much. Monette Maradi, if you're here. Monette?
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Borough President, for having this meeting. My name is Monette Maradi. I am not only a resident of the Upper East Side, but I'm a graduate student pursuing a master's degree in government management. And from what I've seen, what has been said, I would like to, I would like to point out that the developers and the supporters have infrequently attended Community Board hearings and when they have, only presented half truths. In contrast, all those in opposition to the Blood Center's plans have made frequent appearances consistently and always with the factual data. On a local level, this overreach by the developers is disgusting and on a citywide level, it is abhorrent. It is my sophomore experience and opinion that outside interests should not override the will of the people, that local government should always be, put the opinions of the community first. I feel confident in saying that every Upper East Side community member here tonight says no to the Blood Center's current development plans. So to you, I say, please say no to the plans as it currently is. And to the developers, if you're going to try and be a better neighbor, you need to, you need to work with the community first. Thank you very much.
Now we're calling on Julie Menon and then Infiniti George.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Julie Menon and I'm the Democratic nominee for City Council in District Five. Thank you. Thanks. The district that's home to the Blood Center. I really want to thank Borough President Brewer for calling together this important hearing as well as our elected officials, Congresswoman Maloney, Assemblymember Sehright, Councilmember Kalos for their testimony today. The rezoning of a mid-block that this project calls for would be a clear violation of the most basic principles of contextual zoning and would set a dangerous precedent for our neighborhood and our city. Before turning to these issues, I want to be very clear that the Blood Center does important work for our city and for our medical community. I also want to recognize the comments that were made by Local 79 and our friends in labor who are here today as well. I support the critical mission of the Blood Center and want to work with them so they can continue to thrive in our neighborhood. I also recognize that this redevelopment project will bring life sciences jobs during a time when our economy is struggling and our unemployment rate has not recovered. However, this is not the only place the Blood Center can build. The city is targeting investments across New York in many different rapidly expanding life science corridors, many in neighborhoods where we have traditionally under-invested and many in this neighborhood, as Councilmember Kalos pointed out, there are other locations for this project. Where the Blood Center is trying to build on a residential mid-block on East 67th Street, the community has had R8B mid-block zoning for almost 40 years. This contextual zoning maintains the residential character of the neighborhood on mid-blocks and allows for larger developments along the avenues. In these almost four decades, the city has never allowed for rezoning in an Upper East Side R8B district. It should not do so for this project. A 330-foot Midtown-style tower that not only significantly alters zoning, but will ultimately actually weaken the integrity of R8B zoning citywide. In addition, the project, as has been mentioned before, cast shadows on St. Catherine's, on JRECK and has other impacts that have been well said before. We really have to focus on the fact that additionally, this tower will not actually alter the actual work the Blood Center does. The development indeed won't significantly expand the Blood Center's office space. Instead, the Blood Center will continue to occupy only three stories of the proposed building, just as they currently occupy three floors of their current building. The rest of the space will be leased to commercial tenants, not to the Blood Center. So finally, I just want to say, as a former seven-year Community Board Chair and as Commissioner of three different city agencies, I've dealt with countless U-LRPs over the years. Normally, the applicant takes a feedback of the community into account. They then modify the proposal based on that community input. I'm honestly shocked that the Blood Center keeps presenting the. I'm honestly shocked that the Blood Center keeps presenting the exact same proposal at every single community meeting without addressing many of the myriad community concerns that have been raised for months. That's not how ULP is conducted. The community must have a voice, and I respectfully urge Bar President to vote no.
Thank you very much. Now, Infinite George, and then Kate Theobald.
Thank you very much, sir. Good evening, everyone. My name is Infinite George, and I'm representing Local 79. I'm from Queensbridge Houses, right across the bridge. Every park that I grew up in as a kid has been built on top of. They built the city on top of my city that I grew up in. As I sit here and listen to both sides' opposition, it's a lot of facts being stated. Yes, sunlight will be lost to some kids that come out and play for an hour, but I think everyone in here, no matter what color you are, nationality, where you from, along the line, we would need that Blood Center, because we all human. And I get a little emotional now because it's like the New York Blood Center. This is life we're talking about. Okay, some kids will lose a little sunlight, a building will lose, get shadowed, some flowers can't grow, but we talk about a human life, we all here are human. We all here are human, and I could keep going on and about this. So I think that the builder, they building, union work, representing a different part of a community. This is better wages for people that didn't have wages before at this height. I get it emotional because we could go back and forth. We sit here, this is going on for years. And I wanna say this in closing, that we all are human, and I think this Blood Center is needed and should be granted access to build on top of where they wanna build that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. George. Next, Ms. Theobald, and then Martin Bell.
Good evening. My name's Kate Theobald. I'm chief of staff to Councilwoman Keith Powers, who unfortunately couldn't be here tonight, but asked I to read his testimony into the record. I appreciate the opportunity to testify today on the New York Blood Center's ULP application. Today, we are here to discuss the application of New York Blood Center's proposal, which includes both a redeveloped Blood Center and a new life science facility. The application has drawn a lot of attention within the community, and many East Side residents have been vocal with their concerns. It is my normal practice to reserve a final opinion on a ULP application until it comes before the City Council, but I'm taking this opportunity to provide my thoughts and guidance thus far. Like others, I was surprised to learn in early spring that this application now includes a small piece of my district. Therefore, I wanted to provide input on the plan as it travels through the process, as it is my hope that this public process results in a better proposal. Tonight, I wanted to highlight the two predominant concerns that have been raised to me by East Side residents. The first is the ability to preserve sunlight on one of the few recreational open spaces in the neighborhood. For the children and families that utilize the nearby playground, St. Catherine's Park, it's important to preserve the sunlight that reaches the playground. Even as we think about the big-picture needs of the city, our access to recreational open spaces in Manhattan are limited, and residents rightfully want to maximize the ability of sunlight to reach these spaces, and I share that goal. Second, there's a concern about doing a mid-block rezoning at this scale. Traditionally, zoning has reduced density on the mid-blocks due to their narrower streets, while avenues have served as the place for larger-scale development with wider sidewalks, larger commercial lobbies, and better circulation. I recognize that there have been exceptions to this rule over time, but it's reasonable to set a higher bar for anything that breaks with precedent. This concern has been raised by numerous groups, including Friends of Upper East and the City Club, as well as numerous constituents. I believe in the development of life sciences in New York City. Our city is the epicenter of the world for many things, business, arts, and culture. And with our continued investments into the life sciences sector, we are ensuring New York City is a leader in research and innovations, as we've learned how vitally important this sector is over the past year. But we still need to assess if the proposal is scaled to and appropriate for the community that we are considering development with them. The ULP process still has months to go, and that is plenty of time to make this application better and more harmonious with the concerns raised by the community. I always remain confident that there is a path to getting to a resolution, but the application as it stands is not there yet. Thank you to Bar President Gilbert for the opportunity to provide feedback, and for everyone that is testified tonight.
Thank you very much. Martin Bell, and then Mahogany Jones.
Good evening. My name is Marty Bell, and I oppose the Blood Center. But rather than speak to that, tonight I would like to address those people who are here to support the Blood Center. First, I wanna say I heard Anthony from Local 70 saying how important life-
79.
79, thank you. How important life is. And I wanna say I support life sciences as much as anyone. For 30 years, I was vice chairman of an investment banking firm that started more than 100 different medical and biotech firms, including Immune Response with Dr. Jonas Salk, Genetic Systems, Star Surgical, Elon Pharma Medicis, Bradley Pharma, Opco Health, Enzo Bio, and many, many more. With my current company, three weeks ago, I presented to CEPI in Europe, the International Coalition for Epidemic Preparedness, about a pan-corona vaccine my company's working on to prevent the next pandemic. And in three weeks, I'll be filing an IND with the FDA for a clinical trial for treatment we've developed with the Mayo Clinic for resistant hypertension, which affects more than 10 times as many African-Americans as sickle cell. I'm on an advisory board at Columbia Presbyterian, and I'm on the Board of Directors of JDRF. And the last thing I do every night is to pray for cure for type 1 diabetes, which affects my family. So no one needs to lecture me, Anthony, about the importance of life science research. I want as much life science research as possible, but not every location is appropriate for a massive life science tower. If the Blood Center wanted to build the same tower on Liberty Island, you would say they were crazy. The location on East 67th Street is, I submit, worse than Liberty Island. There, it would only block the view of the statue, because it's 35 feet taller than the Statue of Liberty. But on 67th Street, it would do real harm to 2,000 students across the street every school year for the next 100 years, and to an untold number of families that use St. Catherine's Park, including my grandkids, every day. This isn't a joke, this is real harm.
Or start to wrap up, if you don't mind.
I will. To the union members, I understand the jobs it would create, and it will create just as many jobs, not one job less, if this tower is built at a more appropriate site. And to those who want the STEM internships that Mr. Silver promised, and that the Blood Center's dangling in front of you, I ask you to consider one thing. The Blood Center's been at this location since 1968, so why is it that they're now only first offering all these opportunities? They're using you. But if the Blood Center all of a sudden wants to start supporting STEM programs, God bless them. They too can do that just as easily at a more appropriate site, and not one that would put six schools in a park in permanent shadow. So to finish-
You need to wrap up.
Yes. At the community board, I called the Blood Center proposal obscene, but I was recently talking to a friend of mine who had a better word when he heard all of the damage it would do to this community. He said it was soulless. So I'm asking those of you who came here to support the tower tonight to, please, keep supporting life sciences, keep supporting union jobs, keep supporting STEM internships-
Marty, you need to wrap up. Okay, thank you.
But please, have a soul and realize that this is the wrong location.
All right, thank you. All right, so Mahogany Jones, and then David Fortunoff.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify about the New York Blood Center East Project. My name is Mahogany Jones, and I'm a Harlem resident and a member of Labor's Local 79. The developers' partnership with Local 79 will ensure thousands of families sustaining jobs for Harlem residents and New Yorkers of color, both in union, construction, and in life science sectors, so that other women like me will have the same opportunity I did for a career with Local 79. Opponents of this project say that the neighborhood would be too crowded for their children. Well, I have children too, and they are just as equally residents of Upper Manhattan. I deserve to provide for my family and be able to work or seek services in Upper East Side medical corridors. Thank you again for the opportunity to express my support for this project.
Thank you very much. Thank you. David Fortunoff, and then David Melton.
Thank you. I don't wanna be repetitive, so I'll be short. In my capacity as president of 333 Tenants Corp., 114-unit residential co-op building located on East 69th Street, I voice our opposition to the New York Blood Center's proposed rezoning and expansion. As you're aware, the proposal seeks to allow a 600,000-square-foot commercial building in a residential mid-block street. This change of zoning is tantamount to the wholesale transfer of our neighborhood's light, air quality, and quality of life to a private, for-profit enterprise and a not-for-profit that is well-capitalized, taking a public good for private gain, and it is not an equitable trade. No matter what the proponents will tout in terms of economic benefits to the city, they surely can be realized in other locations. And as much as this application would set precedent that is highly detrimental to mid-block RAB zoning, we must strongly oppose its application. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to testify about the New York Blood Center East Project. My name is David Melton. I'm a member of the Labor's Local 79 and a representative for the Greater New York Labor's Employers Cooperation and Education and Trust. Greater New York LESTED is a jointly managed trust fund of the Mason Tenants, District Council of Greater New York and New York City. LESTED represents 17,000 hard-working men and women in construction and 1,200 signatory I am here to express Greater New York's LESTED's support for the development of the New York Blood Center East, a life sciences facility which will improve the health and recovery of New York City's communities by building with union labor that provides family health benefits and family sustaining wages. The New York Blood Center is the leading supplier of blood to hospitals to hospitals all around the city, and also works on research and treatments of sickle cell and other diseases that disproportionately impact African-American New Yorkers and other New Yorkers of color. The developers have committed to building with union labor and creating jobs for New Yorkers of color and low-income households. Center East can uplift residents of East Harlem, South Bronx, Queensbridge, and other neighborhoods hit hard by COVID. In conclusion, we stand against any opposition that seeks to keep our members, largely immigrants and people of color, and any working New Yorkers out of the Upper East Side. We should be welcoming more people to career pathways here like those Longfellow has committed to in union construction and in the life sciences sector. Thank you again for the opportunity to express our support.
Thank you very much. Chris Mercado, Elizabeth Rose.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Chris Mercado. I'm the head of Career Success at The Knowledge House, which is a technology education nonprofit focused on expanding economic opportunities, employment opportunities for youth and young adults in New York City. Since 2014, we've served over 1,800 youth and young adults, and a few of whom currently now work at the New York Blood Center in their first tech roles. And that's how we know, and we can see, the Blood Center's proposal to expand its facility, it's not just a project that strengthens NYC as a leading life science hub, but it's also a major workforce development opportunity for young people interested in STEM careers like those we serve. The Center East proposal would also double the Blood Center's capacity for research and blood collection at a time where our city desperately needs space for both. And it would also enable the Blood Center to form these workforce partnerships with organizations like The Knowledge House that create access to high-quality, future-proof jobs for diverse populations, and a building like Center East provides essential space for nurturing our diverse talent. Before I close, I've heard a lot about shadows and natural light. So, when I think about the Black and Brown folks that I predominantly serve, when I think about the two decades I grew up living as an undocumented immigrant, living in shadows that a lot of people can't relate to, the shadows that a building would cast upon an area, upon your block, does not compare to the shadow of systemic inequality that colors folks like me who have been historically excluded. So when you start thinking about natural light, I would urge that everyone in the city focus on the natural light within the talent that's in the city, and if we can leverage our partnership with New York Blood Center to give opportunities to these talented folks, then we'll support it, and that's why The Knowledge House supports Center East.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Elizabeth Rose, and then Dwayne Towns.
Thank you, Madam Bar President. Thank you, Assemblymember Seiright, for being here. I was going to change what I was planning to say based on some of the comments I've heard this evening. 15 years ago, I got involved in our local community and in issues of development in our area and our local community board, because there was a proposal to tear down the Julia Richmond Education Complex. And the groups that were proposing to tear down the Julia Richmond Education Complex and replace it with a modern educational facility for Hunter College thought that the community wouldn't care, because the children who attended JRECK were not from the community. And this community came together, and this community fought that proposal, and this community demonstrated its support for welcoming students from all over the city into our community and supporting the internships that they had developed and the history that they had developed in that building. So, this is not about keeping anybody out of the Upper East Side, and I am deeply concerned by that perception. This is about, the Blood Center wants something for free, and they want the community to pay for it. If the Blood Center had done their work as a not-for-profit and built what is known in the not-for-profit world as a development function and developed relationships with the philanthropic community, we might not be here, because they would then have done capital campaigns over the past 35 years that they have known that they could not build a huge tower on this site, and they would have been able to pay for the facilities that they are now seeking to get for free. And that is offensive to me as a member of this community. The reason this building is proposed to be as large as it is is so that the Blood Center can get their new building for free, and the developer needs to build the other 60% of the building to pay for that. and the developer needs to build the other 60% of the building to pay for that. Well, back in 2015, another developer sought to get zoning restrictions removed from a building from New York City and managed to convince somebody within the Department of Citywide Administrative Services that that was an okay thing. This was Rivington House on the Lower East Side. It was a huge embarrassment for the mayor.
You need to stop to wrap up.
And so let's really focus on what this is about and not about. This is about the Blood Center wants a building for free. They will continue to operate whether Longfellow builds this giant tower or not. This is not about the continuation of the Blood Center's blood services work to the city. This is just about they want something for free.
Okay.
And one final point. The notion that the other zoning, upzoning of RAB on which the Blood Center's representative is saying there's no real precedent here, to go from an R8B to an R8A, they think is comparable to what is being proposed here, is ludicrous. Where else in the city is there a C27 single lot completely surrounded by residential housing?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Dwayne Towns and then Craig DeBana.
Thank you very much, Wayne. The security people are asking us to wear our masks. I think we all are, but I just want to add to it. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thank you.
Move your... You're so tall. You gotta move it up the mic. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for having me. My name is Dwayne Towns, and I am a proud, active member of Labor's Local 79. I wrote a speech, but it seemed as though it'd be somewhat repetitive. I heard a lot of things. I saw slides. I heard laws quoted. I saw this movie. It's called Motherless Brooklyn. And it was about Robert Moses. And I know we all, some of us know or read of the history of Robert Moses. But this rezoning thing is nothing new. This rezoning thing is nothing new. It's been happening since the time of Jesus. And it seemed like there's a tug-of-war going here. Those who've been in the area for a long time, they are like Goliath. Those who are siding with 79, they're like David. It seemed like they have no win. 79 changed my life. I worked that on 64th Street between Second and First at Memorial Sloan, built a cancer research center. So this center here... Excuse me?
Well, come on. Not go back and forth.
Yeah. Can I? I didn't interrupt you, sir, when you spoke.
Go ahead.
Please. Thank you. This is what I mean about... This is what I mean about the analogy I gave with Sansum and Goliath or David and Goliath. I represent 79, and wherever union is building, we will reconstruct this school here. And it'd be zoning or no zoning cries. If I live in Harlem, if they came to my hood to build, I would even have to move to a place where sunshine is or guess what? Not have no sunshine. It's unfair. It's ugly, but it's a reality. I just want to say, I represent the unions, and I build, and it kept me from living the life of crime. And I will continue to build as long as the unions provide jobs for me. That's it.
Thank you very much, and we too love Local 79 and Mr. McGuire. So thank you so much. Next is Craig DeBana and then Michelle Bernbaum. Craig?
Not going to repeat the things you've heard tonight because a lot of the arguments are not really what this is all about. Has anyone learned anything from COVID and Wuhan in the last year? Have we learned something about this? Have we learned that this is not something that should be conducted in a neighborhood with densely populated people? You're talking about 2,500 people coming into a workplace and having no accidents. People from the Blood Center are saying things like, "Well, the subways are here." Well, that person that gets contaminated and gets on the subways, how fast did it travel around the world, folks? I haven't heard anything about it tonight. These are the experiments that they're doing there. We have no control over what they're doing. The 334-foot tower, have you got it rented to anybody yet? It's not a rhetorical question, sir. Nobody. We don't know what's going in there. I've seen you on the video. Have you got it rented? No, because Longfellow's just going to try to make money off it. They don't care who they put in there or what. There was a young lady that spoke one night and said, "We don't intend to do..." "Intend." We don't intend to do these things there when they were asked about questions about what would be taking place in the tower. We don't intend to. Is that what you want to go for? That's great in court to walk in there and go, "Well, we only said we didn't intend to. We didn't say we wouldn't do it." I think you all really better think about this. I'm a member of a labor union. For 13 years, I've been on the executive board. I bring a lot of work into New York, but we do things thought out. Local 600. Oh, you should.
Come on. No back and forth, please. Go ahead.
I didn't hear 79 until tonight.
Wanted... Can you finish, please?
Okay. So anyway, all I'm saying is you really got to think about these things. These union jobs will go wherever the building is going to be, but think about where you want to put it. It is true.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you very much. Next is Michelle Bernbaum and then Lara Sutchen. Michelle, go ahead.
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Borough President, for hearing my testimony. My name is Michelle Bernbaum, and I'm a member of Community Board Eight, and I have attended all of the community meetings addressing the development of the New York Blood Center site. I'm testifying tonight in firm opposition to the proposed development on East 67th and 66th Street. I'm here to affirm support for the unanimous vote by Community Board Eight to disapprove of the Longfellow Real Estate Partners redevelopment proposal. For all the reasons stated in the seven-page resolution and for the notable and important concern that such a breach of mid-block zoning will adversely affect many communities in all five boroughs far into the future, this application must be denied. Zoning regulations are the only thing that stand between communities and development chaos and therefore must be respected and protected. A precedent for building the equivalent of a 33-story commercial building in the middle of a block in a residential community is abhorrent. The Blood Center can build as of right to accommodate its needs, which will provide substantially more square footage than it will be afforded by the Longfellow plan. Please join the many neighborhood preservation groups, block associations, community groups, community facilities and individuals and stand in opposition to the Longfellow proposal.
Thank you very much, Michelle. Lara Sutchen and then Santos Rodriguez. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Lara Zaking, representing Friends of the Upper East Side. The rezoning sought here effectively reverses the most basic planning principle governing the built environment on the Upper East Side, that the idea that towers belong on the avenues while side streets are dominated by lower-scale residential and associated uses. The campaign for contextual zoning, which resulted in the RAB zoning district reinforced that existing context and has done so consistently and remarkably well for 36 years. This project introduces exactly the kind of building RAB was designed to prevent, the mid-block tower, and it would be the first rezoning of its kind on the Upper East Side. If the RAB zoning is dismantled here, it will set a dangerous precedent for contextual districts throughout the Upper East Side and citywide. In Community Board Eight, only 6% of the buildings that are zone RAB exceed the 75-feet height limit. And when analyzing the areas surrounding the Blood Center site, most of the very few non-compliant structures are not mid-block towers. Those buildings either occupy the floor block or are also located on the avenues. Let's be clear. The Blood Center is a nonprofit that has operated in the neighborhood for many years. But this project is not about the Blood Center's ability to continue its good work. It is about private for-profit developers seeking development rights the Blood Center is not entitled to in order to build a massive commercial building in a residential neighborhood. The fact that the Blood Center itself will occupy only the lower third of the building, leaving the rest available for speculative commercial tenants, demonstrates the unnecessary nature of this project. Indeed, the Blood Center could build 10% more community facility space in the as-of-right scenario, and there may be other, more sensitive alternatives that could be developed to lessen the impact on the neighborhood.
Laura, if you can sum up.
Just summing up. This aggressive proposal demonstrates disregard for the community in every way. It requires the community to bear the impact of an egregious building in order to benefit a private developer. It sets an irreversible land use precedent for the Upper East Side and what makes our neighborhood livable. Friends urges Madam Borough President Brewer to reject this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Santos Rodriguez and then Anthony Barrett.
Thank you, sir. I know him very well, so I'm glad you're here. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Borough President. Thank you, Assemblywoman C. Wright. I'm Santos Rodriguez. I'm here to testify on behalf of Guy LaBarber, president of the Building and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York and vicinity in support of New York Blood Center project. The Building and Construction Trades Council is an organization of local building and construction trades unions that are affiliated with 15 international unions in North America's building trade unions. Our local union affiliates represent approximately 100,000 union construction workers. The building transmission is to rise the standard of living for all workers to advocate for safe work condition and to collectively advance working conditions for our affiliates, members, as well as all new, all workers in New York City. This is our third time testifying in this project, in support of this project. As we think about COVID-19 pandemic, the various phases we were all fortunate enough to live through and how our city will adapt to move into the future, supporting the expansion of New York Blood Center's East Headquarters is an easy decision. The project will provide economic stimulus to our city as it anticipates to spur over the creation of 2,600 new jobs on-site and estimate 3,000 indirect jobs and total new income output of 1.1 billion annually. These jobs will provide wages and benefits that will support the middle-class lifestyle for workers and their families, creating much-needed stimulus in our city. While the Building and Construction Trades Council generally supports development that puts people to work with good wages and benefits, this project will also allow the Blood Center to expand its research, facilitate and provide space for life science startups. The ability to provide space to startups, provide institution and partners will attract talent to our city and improve the important research conducted by the Blood Center. The Blood Center's work is important. Its facilities are utilized for research and development in the field of blood-related diseases included potential treatment for COVID-19 as well as research into regenerative medicine. We should want this type... Excuse me. We should want this type of work performed in New York City. We should put and encourage this type of work to perform in New York City. Approving this project is a step in the right direction. The Building and Construction Trades Council of Greater New York and vicinity supports projects like the Blood Center, a project that will improve the lives of many New Yorkers, increasing the resiliency of our city and creating middle-class jobs for our members in the process. We thank you for the opportunity to support this project. And you know, Madam Borough President?
Yes, sir.
We've lived through COVID, right?
Yes.
And whether it's in our neighborhood, it got to us and affected all of us. Knocked me down personally for 16 days where I put myself out to prevent my family from getting ill. My wife still got it. My little guy still tested positive for the antibodies. Thank goodness with no real effects. I'm still going through the long haul as a fact that was probably one of the first ones in late March, right before we closed, right? The governor closed the state. So it is affecting us, right? But it's also putting New York back... These developments put our members back.
Yep.
You've heard it here from many of us opposing the project, supporting the project. We've lived in the shadows also. We know what it's like. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Anthony Barrett and then Karen Mira. Anthony?
Madam, Borough President LaBarber, thank you for holding the hearing. My name's Anthony Barrett, and I represent 301 East 66th Street, a 200-unit residential building immediately adjacent to the Blood Center. And I'm speaking opposition to this project. This evening, you've heard multiple issues relating to shadows and loss of sunlight. You might have heard about the traffic congestion issues, the issues related to the construction. But I would like to talk about one issue that is already in place that could limit and prevent all of these, and that is zoning. This lot is not zoned for this type of use. Longfellow, their compromised legal team, Kramer Levin, and their highly-paid lobbyist, Casser, are making the argument that this spot should be rezoned commercial because of its existing use and due to the existing establishment of medical uses in our neighborhood, East of First Avenue, and that this is a natural extension of those uses. In their presentation, they highlighted properties adjacent to the Blood Center as hospital-owned, but did not mention that these hospital-owned properties are, in effect, residential properties used by the hospital for their staff. And that fits the contextual neighborhood use. This is, in effect, an illegal spot rezoning. Longfellow has incorporated our condominium property and the property across the street of Second Avenue to be rezoned without any notification, reason or permission to give the appearance of a larger rezoning area. This is the smoke and mirrors that the city planning department, in effect, actually collaborated with them and buys them to proceed that way. This is a callous disregard of the law and the power of city planning. In closing, I will comment on the New York Blood Center itself. This is not your typical not-for-profit that needs money for research. In 2019, 25% of the New York Blood Center's revenues were generated by four out-of-state facilities from Minnesota, Nebraska, Rhode Island and Maryland.
You need to wrap up. Thanks.
Over the past two years, the not-for-profit Blood Center has had GNA expenses of over $100 million. $100 million. These are expenses that are not used in the actual collection of blood.
Okay.
The Blood Center itself has a fund of over, in excess, between $450 and $500 million. They have the money to build this project.
But thank you, sir. You got to wrap up. Thank you so much.
One more last sentence. $15 million budget, $15 million out of their total budget of $500 million was allocated for research, which includes sickle cell research. So if you come out talking about all the research the Blood Center is doing, look at the facts and see how much money they're actually spending doing the research that would help our community.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Good evening, Borough President Brewer and Assemblymember C. Wright. I'm Karen Mira. I'm an attorney with Carter-Ledyard in Melbourne, representing Friends of the Upper East Side historic districts. I'm going to shorten my remarks so as not to repeat some of the important points that have been made by many others here tonight. I want to begin by acknowledging the importance of the Blood Center's work and the city's life science initiative. This application is not a referendum on either of those things. It's about land use and zoning and whether this application merits your support. And respectfully, we believe that it does not. A number of other people have pointed out the development site is underbuilt. And I just want to say that the Blood Center not only could, it admits that it would build a brand-new, larger- build a brand-new, larger facility on the development site under the existing zoning. That's the no-action condition in the D E I S. So even if this is voted down, the Blood Center would have a new facility. Second, the city can and in fact has been successfully growing the life science sector without converting residential neighborhoods into commercial lab space. For example, site-zone commercial and manufacturing on Park Avenue South in Long Island City on Varick Street have been redeveloped as commercial labs under the city's life science initiative. And that brings me to another point I just wanted to make is one of the very negative impacts of the pandemic has been the glut of commercial office space. Commercial office space is in a crisis. And C-six zones are a zone that already allow life sciences. And if we have a glut of commercial office space, we have an initiative that the city wants to advance, why are we not looking at some of the vacant commercial office space to put this use? And finally, I just, a lot of people have talked about the R A B zoning and the mid-block. I want to focus just very briefly on the absurdity, the bad planning in terms of the rezoning to C-two-seven in this location. Right now, the only commercial district where you can have a commercial lab is C-six. C-six zones are in midtown. They are maybe in Hudson Yards. They may be in the financial district. They're in dense, big, commercial districts with large floor plates, which is what the applicant says it needs and their development partner would like. This site is not being rezoned C-six. They could have, but they knew that would look absurd because there is not a residential neighborhood in this city in any borough that has a C-six in the middle of it, let alone on a mid-block. Instead, they have asked to rezonate C-two-seven. I want to read City Planning's description of the C-two-seven.
Quickly, Karen, we're running out of time. Quickly, quickly.
Predominantly residential in character, mapped on major thoroughfares and allowing uses that cater to the daily needs of the immediate neighborhood, like grocery stores, dry cleaners.
Thank you.
It won't be any of those things. Anyway, thank you very much. We will submit our full written comments.
Thank you so much. Alita Camp and then Tricia Shimura. Alita Camp? Alita here? All right, quickly. That's why I called people so they're ready. Alita Camp and then Tricia.
Thank you. I am not Alita. I am Maggie Lehman. She has asked me to speak for her. And therefore I am. I'm tearing up what she gave me to read because it's repetitive and it's not responsive to what I've heard here tonight. There, so I'm taking poetic license. I'm sure she'll be fine with it. There is a reason why there are no life science buildings, either existing or those in the planning stage, in residential neighborhoods. They're risky. They're not safe. There's been no discussion here tonight about the radioactive materials, about other toxic unidentified substances that will be used in these labs in the Longfellow Tower. There's been no discussion here tonight about the high-velocity exhaust fans and other commercial-sized mechanicals that are designed for the seventh floor of this tower as well as on the roof. Those high-velocity exhaust fans will spew out at high-velocity rates contaminated air on the seventh floor directly into the windows of the Julia Richmond Educational Complex, which, as has been noted here before, has students from all over New York City, every borough. I want to respond to, I want to respond to some of the heartfelt comments that I listened to from, from our fellow workers. I want to respond to those. Come visit this enormously diverse neighborhood and community. Come visit and look at this diverse neighborhood made up of people of all color.
You need to sum up, okay?
In, in, all right. In conclusion, this issue tonight is not about jobs. There will be jobs wherever this tower is built. There will be wonderful educational opportunities and internships wherever this tower is built, including if it is, if it is built only two blocks east in this neighborhood on York Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Tricia and then Bill Angelo.
Good evening, Borough President Brewer. My name is Tricia Shimura, and I'm a resident of four twenty-five E seventy-second Street. I'm a social worker and a longtime member of Manhattan Community Board Eight, where I am currently the first vice-chair of the board and co-chair of the Parks and Waterfront Committee. I spent the last decade fighting on behalf of our students as well as our parks and open spaces, particularly those in Community Board Eight. And most importantly, I'm a mother to a two-year-old who plays in St. Catherine's Park on a regular basis. We are extremely familiar with this site as well as the street, the sidewalk, and the park activity. There's been a lot that's already said, so I'm going to just try to add a little bit more details that relate to the Julia Richmond Education Complex in St. Catherine's Park. We've already heard that J-Rac is across the street from the Blood Center, and we know that it's a home to an elementary school, a school for students with special needs, for high schools, an infant toddler center, and a teacher center. What I'd also like to add is that school buses, let alone the M-sixty-six bus, are a near constant on Sixty-seventh Street at several times throughout the day. And many students require additional assistance as they enter and exit the building. Enveloping J-Rac in near-permanent shadows and adding additional traffic to the street devalues our students, their education, and their safety. I urge you also to consider the devastating impact on St. Catherine's Park. By their own assessment, the developers acknowledge in the D A E I S that the project would cast shadows that would have significant adverse impact on the park use. We've heard already that the park would lose direct light throughout the spring, summer, and fall months. At our Parks Committee meeting in Community Board Eight, the City Parks Department also agreed with this assessment, noting that the shadows would negatively impact planning and activities in the park throughout the year. St. Catherine's is very unique. The majority of the park is made of concrete with plantings only on the perimeter. In the sunlight with the water features and the children playing on the play equipment, it is a magical respite in an otherwise densely populated city block. But in the shadows, the park is cold, dark, unwelcoming, and uninviting. St. Catherine's also somewhat uniquely serves a wide range of users, including seniors, families, and hospital patients from the surrounding medical institutions. This is not just a park for children, although my son would like to believe that it is. It's also an essential open space with tables, benches, and a very walkable pathway around the full park.
Need to wrap up.
That makes it beloved for seniors, employees, and other adults, as well as children who use it on a daily basis. In summary, the loss of our park, the loss of our safety on our streets is too high of a cost to bear. I urge you to disapprove this application.
Thank you very much. Bill Angelo and Valerie Mason.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As the board president of three oh one E sixty-sixth Street condominium located directly adjacent to the west of the proposed Blood Center Tower, our building is strongly opposed to this zoning application. Along with St. Catherine Park, J-Rac, and New York Public Library, we are the most affected individual entity due to our immediate adjacency and large numbers of units that will be negatively impacted. We support our neighbors, our neighborhood, and the residents of the Upper East Side who are against this proposal for the same reason that we are. This inappropriate, enormous, out-of-scale, drone-busting building will ruin the equality of life for everyone who placed St. Catherine Park, J-Rac, in perpetual gloom, set at temporal, excuse me, temporal terrible precedent by being the first zone, the first up-zoning of R A B mid-block, since its adoption thirty-five years ago and commercialized a low-rise neighborhood residential suite. Think it's not the first time that the Blood Center proposed to build a thirty-story tower at this location. In nineteen eighty-five, they went through this environmental review process to build such a tower filled with residential units rather than what they're proposing today. However, as had been mentioned many times, once this rezoning is approved, nothing will stop the New York Blood Center from redeveloping this property into just another guidanted, commercial, and residential tower. If the Blood Center wishes to build a midtown Manhattan-type of tower with guidanted exterior signage, no setback, and several floors worth of machinery, they're more than welcome to do so on an avenue with entire zoning or yet embedded in midtown. Please oppose this application by writing note with no condition.
Thank you very much. Right on time, too. Valerie Mason and Marco Tomayo. Valerie?
Thank you very much, Madam Borough President. My name is Valerie Mason, and I'm the president of the East Seventy-second Street Neighborhood Association, and we are proud members of the Coalition to Stop the Tower. I was going to make some remarks tonight about zoning, but those will be in our official comments. I want to talk really to the union members here tonight. I am a member of a union family. My grandfather, my uncle, all members of the construction unions. And when I walk around New York, I see all the buildings they built, and I'm really proud of them. My mother, a member of C W A eleven oh one, ninety-one years old, and has the healthcare that her union provided her. I know how strong and how important those jobs are. And what I'm asking you tonight is to join the Coalition to stop the tower. Because what is happening here tonight is a commercial developer is trying to pit New Yorkers against each other. And we should not be divided. If, and we'd really like to sit down with the unions because we think that if you look at the project that has been put forth as an alternative by Stop the Coalition and that was presented to Community Board Eight, you will see that there are tons of union jobs to be had and that our community has supported development and construction on the Upper East Side for everyone that lives in New York City and beyond. We had a ten-year construction project of the Second Avenue subway that brought jobs to everyone across the city and even the country. The gentleman mentioned that the project on E sixty-fourth Street. Many, many of our health and institutional neighbors have built on the Upper East Side, and we have supported that, and we will continue to support that. And we want you to be with us, not against us. If you support the alternative that we have, you will see there will be union jobs for everyone.
Valerie, you need to wrap up.
I will. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And what I want to say is, what is happening here is a travesty. This applicant has admitted that it doesn't need this tower to fulfill its long-term mission. So get with us and join the Coalition to stop the tower.
Thank you very much. Marco, Tomayo, Marco, and then Tane Wadsworth.
Thank you, Madam Borough President. I am Marco Tomayo, architect, planner, and resident of the Upper East Side, and I raise in opposition to this application. I am not against the Blood Center's state-of-art building to replace its obsolete one. Indeed, this applicant can file this application in the Department of Buildings and obtain its approval and continue with its life-saving research mission and create jobs at the same time. What I am opposing is the laboratories that doesn't fit in our residential area. This project would create a negative precedent to change dramatically the entire R A B residential district to a commercial-industrial use. If there is a human error, this lab type-three could overpass the maximum exhaust particle permitted forming hazard conditions for the entire community. This is a scary situation. Finally, we need to promote business to create jobs, but in the right locations. We have overwhelming of strab hungers and stifled traffic conditions in rush hours. And the Blood Center proposal would bring even more traffic. Therefore, most likely would have traffic gridlock. This would trigger the congestion present and consequently an uncontrollable inflation affecting the middle and low-income families, forming an espacial segregation by income. In short, we have to promote business where we can create an equitable city because the developers cannot detect our future. Furthermore, the proposed C-two-seven commercial industrial use doesn't even exist in the entire zoning resolution. This is a new selfish and unreasonable proposed district. Please disapprove of it.
Thank you very much. Tane Wadsworth and then Dan DeLuca.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Borough President, for hosting this hearing. My name is Tane Wadsworth. I'm a council representative for the New York City District Council of Carpenters. And thank you for the opportunity to voice my support for this project, which I believe will be crucial for our city's economic recovery. And basically, I was going to read this thing, but I just want to address a few things because a lot of people are confused. We're not here against the community. We are the community. We have twenty thousand members in our union in New York City alone. So everyone's getting up here saying, well, it's not about jobs. You're right. It's about careers. And right now, the union market is not where it's at. So these developers, you're crucifying them on a stand. Listen, everybody has their opinion, and I respect it. But at the same time, you don't see developers and the New York Blood Center and people like that coming up here saying, I want to build responsible development. I want to build union development. It's not every day that happens. So we should all just take a minute and say, hey, you know what? Let's all work together. It's not us against you. My members live here, too. We live right here, too. So we should all respect each other. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I love the carpenters also, particularly your apprenticeship program in the basement where you have the best carpenters in the world. Dan DeLuca and then Laura Gregor and Carmen Gregor.
Thank you, Madam Borough President. Assemblywoman? Everything's been said a lot, so let me just speak from my perspective, okay? I'm a proud New York Rican from the Bronx. I've been living in Hell's Kitchen for twenty-one years, okay? I'm here on behalf of the eight thousand members, carpenters of Local one fifty-seven. That's Manhattan and the Bronx. We have other, eight other locals. That's nine locals altogether for the New York City District Council of Carpenters of over twenty thousand members. In addition, we're here in support of Building Trades in New York City, the Greater Building Trades. That's a hundred thousand members. So let me address it to this way, this way. To my fellow New York City residents, let me explain to you about jobs and projects. You think that the jobs will be there. If the building doesn't get built, the jobs are not there. I don't have clothes on my back or food on my table or a roof over my head. Or we can't send our kids to college. We can't take vacations. Can't buy cars, all those things. Tane just said it's very important. This city always was a union city. We're under threat now by developers, foreign developers, foreign international developers who don't want to use union labor because in their countries, they don't have to. This is a career. It's not a job. I've been doing this fifteen years. I've been on the Political Action Committee fourteen. I've been to plenty of these meetings, and one lady was right. They are pitting us against each other. But the problem is the basic understanding of economics. If you walk around your neighborhood, most of your jobs are non-union, and they're not built safely. And that's the most important thing. I know, Madam Borough President, you get calls weekly on job accidents, correct? And three weeks ago, on the front page of the Daily News, right, they were talking about gun violence and construction accidents.
Yep.
Most of those, and I would, I don't have the numbers. I'm going to say ninety-two percent.
They are the non-union.
Okay, so when you have a developer that wants to build a hundred percent union, that's going to feed my pension, that's going to give me an hourly wage, medical benefits, that's prices. And I just want to say to the other members of the community, and Madam Borough President, you can say this. You can agree with me on this. And this is my point about the jobs not being, if the jobs, the jobs always be there. Well, we were going to have Amazon come to Long Island City that would have put a million man-hours into our benefit. That would have put a million man-hours into our benefits funds, into our pension funds, and that went nowhere. It evaporated. You can't make that up. So I thank you for letting me speak today. I thank you for the other members of the unions, and I thank you for the local residents.
Thank you very much. Laura Greger, Carmen Greger, and then Sharon Pope-Marshall.
Hi, thank you. I'm Laura Greger. My daughter Carmen, we represent the families at JRECK. I am the proud daughter of a union family.
You need to talk into the microphone.
Sorry. I'm the proud daughter of a union family, local union, sheet metal workers, local union twenty-eight, who did work at JRECK, and we oppose the dangerous construction and in order to protect the safety of the students at JRECK. There's over two thousand students that come from families of color, from underserved communities, from all the boroughs, primarily outside of Manhattan, that attend JRECK. My daughter Carmen, can you say something about the student body?
Um, yeah. So being in the building, we already hear a lot of traffic coming from Second Avenue or people coming from First Avenue going to Second Avenue while we're taking tests. And I look around and I see people who can't concentrate because of the traffic. So then having this building would add more distraction for students who already might not be able to concentrate as much. Like me, I can't concentrate very well. And then having to have to hear the construction while you're taking a math class or taking a math test or a history test or writing an essay in English, I, it's just, I really don't think it's going to be constructive for the whole school and for the students in general, especially for the students that go to school to get out of, um, they're, just to get out and to be able to go somewhere where they feel safe. Yeah.
It's a very successful.
Thank you. We got, we really appreciate both of you. Thank you very much. Sharon Pope, and then Rick Belucci, and then Ronnie Gilbert. Sharon? Sharon, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Borough President. Brewer. Good evening. My name is Sharon Pope-Marshall. I am the executive director of Civitas. Civitas, since nineteen eighty-one, has promoted sound, context, sensitive urban planning, zoning, and land use policies that have improved the life of urban neighborhoods, in particular the Upper East Side and also El Barrio, East Harlem. To accommodate its future and operational needs, the New York Blood Center is proposing to build a substantially larger, more modern facility. However, the proposed bill program in conjunction with the requested land use actions to facilitate it raises significant land use issues which Civitas cannot support. The New York Blood Center project is located mid-block on Sixty Seventh Street between First and Second Avenues. The site is within a medium-density contextual zoning district that allows for residential and community facility development. In particular, it also has mandatory street wall controls, and it has a height limit of approximately six to seven stories. That's the existing zoning. As proposed, the site would be rezoned from its medium-density district to one that allows a higher density for both residential and community facility buildings. Additionally, the building would be demolished, the New York Blood Center building would be demolished, to create the proposed development site. Civitas believes that the proposed bulk and size will negatively affect the contextual character of East Sixty Seventh and East Sixty Sixth Streets. The surrounding neighborhood is characterized.
Sharon, you need to start to wrap up, please.
I will, Madam Borough President. By low and medium-density buildings on the mid-block, the proposed building is set to rise in excess of three hundred and thirty feet and would not be compatible with the overall context or scale that typifies buildings that are immediately adjacent or face the proposed site. Civitas cannot support the New York Center, Blood Center project as currently proposed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Merle.
Thank you very much. And just Rick Belucci, we have a hundred and twenty people watching on Facebook. I just want people to know that, and after Rick is running over.
Hi, thank you. I am very pleased with how the community has come together in opposition.
You probably need to move it up a little bit. Yeah, there you go. You're a little bit taller than Sharon.
As the next phase, I would hope that our leadership, if you ladies would, and Ben Callis, I don't think he's here any longer, would, as a member of the actual voting body and others like you, can actively and aggressively convey our side of the story to the other important voting members, especially members of the city council, that is, especially as we're certainly being vilified as selfish elitist and the worst kind of not-in-my-backyard type citizens, which is really unfair. We can be sure Longfellow's lobbyists have paid members, have paid members, those members' visits already. How can we, their constituents, join in that effort? And that's basically what I'm here to ask, is how we can now break out of our bubble and begin the process of conveying to those at minimum thirty-seven members of the city council who are the important voters, and ask that you would join in that effort, as would Ben Callis. He said that he's got our backs. That's important, but more than that, we need his leadership to go and convey our side of the story. I just want to make a few comments about generally what I've heard through many of the meetings. A seven-hundred-million-dollar pool of investors comprised of private equity, banks, whomever else will require, they will require a return on their investment immediately, and Longfellow will not hesitate a minute, with really no oversight, to repurpose their space for a hedge fund, an engineering firm, a media company, et cetera. We won't be able to hold them to any supposed contractual obligation, since that requires legal action, and they will bust the terms of any supposed restrictive covenants. The concept of partners is ridiculous, because Longfellow is selecting the tenants and not giving the Blood Center any say or right or refusal. For what it's worth, while Longfellow has developed labs, they've never built a structure anywhere near the size of this tower at any place, let alone New York City. Why would we, why we would accept their, them on training wheels for such a critical, dangerous project? Five years seems very optimistic for a timeframe, given the density of New York, the bureaucracy, unions, et cetera. Who are the partners? Everybody they've mentioned is already here. They've only mentioned MSK, NYU, Cornell Wild. And what is this idea?
So you need to wrap up, please.
Yeah. And what is this idea of proximity and coffee shops and cafeteria and nice, and nice walks in the park to steer groundbreaking science and medicine? The inference of such an absurd assertion is shoddy work is being done in global collaboration.
So you need to wrap up. We've got many more to go.
Very good.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ronnie Gilbert, Patricia Lancaster, and Marshall Lowe. And be ready, because we're running out of time. Ronnie, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Patricia Lancaster. I'm representing Ronnie Gilbert and myself. Great. Thank you for being here, Borough President and Assemblymember Seabright. I'm the former Buildings Commissioner of the City of New York in the building, in the Bloomberg administration. I want to stress the issue of youth groups in the zoning resolution and occupancy classifications in the building code. These determinations will ultimately be made by numerous agencies and entities. There are overlapping and often ambiguous definitions that will make judgment difficult. Yet repeated calls for information from the project team about potential clients have been largely ignored. This will have huge ramifications on cost, mechanical space, and the number of occupants in the building, none of which are being addressed. For all of the above reasons that others have mentioned and those, and after much consideration, I urge you to vehemently and furiously object to the Blood Center tower. Thank you.
Thank you. Your words mean a lot, former commissioner. Marshall Lowe, Chris Collins. Is Marshall Lowe here? All right, Chris Collins.
Madam Borough President, Assemblywoman Seabright, thank you.
I've known him since nineteen seventy-eight. I just wanted to.
I think that's right.
I know what's right.
Yeah. My name is Chris Collins, and I'm a retired zoning and land use lawyer for the City of New York. For thirteen years, I served as counsel to the Land Use Committee at the City Council, and for more than eight years, I was Commissioner on the Board of Standards and Appeals. Much earlier in my career, I was Chairman of Manhattan Community Board Eight. In retirement, I serve on the Board of Advisors for Friends of the Upper East Side to start districts, and it is in that capacity that I appear before you tonight. This small lapel pin that I'm wearing dates back to nineteen eighty-five, and it reads RAB now. I wore it to the City Planning Commission and Board of Estimates hearings that resulted in the mid-block zoning that is under attack by this application. When it was adopted in nineteen eighty-five, a number of mid-blocks were carved out to accommodate the future development needs of schools, hospitals, museums, houses of worship, et cetera. This community agreed for there to be greater development for those types of institutional needs. I do not recall the Blood Center seeking a carve-out back when they could have. But in reality, the application that's before you today is not about the fine work that the Blood Center does. It's really about whether the City of New York is willing to violate good planning principles and abandon smart zoning to support a real estate deal, to support a real estate deal that is as egregious as it is unwarranted. The sheer size and massing of this building surpasses anything that could be called reasonable. Its placement on a residential mid-block facing both a school and a small park cannot be justified, even in a crowded city like New York, where competing forces bump up against each other all the time. Madam Borough President, I ask that you use your good office to recommend the disapproval of this application, and additionally, I ask that you seek to bring together the parties to seek a compromise solution that can meet both the needs of the Blood Center but does not wreak havoc with RAB mid-block zoning. Thank you for the effort.
Thank you very much. Joshua, and then Billy Friedland, and then Sarah Shapiro. And then Billy Friedland, and then Sarah Shapiro. Go ahead.
Hello, I'm Joshua Satin. I am the principal of the El Baker School and building manager of the Julia Richmond Building. Thank you, Manhattan Borough President Gail Brewer, Assemblymember Samantha Seabright. I am speaking on behalf of the over two thousand students from every borough in our school and our building, and the hundreds of staff that come from all over the city. We oppose this structure on behalf of the students who will not have a consistent school year in the building. The four-plus years of construction, the four years of interruptions, the four years of missing information, being unable to have conversations, four years affecting our most vulnerable students at P two-two-six with sound and eventually no sunlight, four years of more traffic, four years of more congestion, four years of figuring out what the years to follow will bring. We know that this will bring even more congestion, Second Avenue, Sixty Sixth Street, Sixty Seventh, traffic, people, shade to our facade, shade to the park, essentially shade to our children from across the city. Let's vote to keep the light. Let's vote to continue to invest in our children, their well-being, their chance to have consistency, their chance to excel. In one of our last meetings, Ms. Dean, a parent from Talent Unlimited, said that this was a, a, a plan, a, over its public need versus private greed. So please vote no.
Thank you very much, sir. Billy Friedland, and then Sarah Shapiro, and then Lowe Vanderwijk. Thank you, Billy.
Thank you, Borough President Brewer. Thank you, Assemblymember Rebecca Seabright. My name is Billy Friedland. I'm the Secretary of Community Board Eight, and I'm speaking today in my individual capacity. Many others have, will already speak to the many issues that this proposal brings to bear. The impacts on St. Catharist Park, the impacts on Julia Richmond, the precedent that's going to set. I want to focus specifically on zoning for dollars, because I think this is one of the most egregious consequences of this proposal. What is happening before us is essentially a form of corporate welfare. The Blood Center is asking for money to be printed out of thin air. We should reject this policy and force the Blood Center to act under existing zoning regulations. We know that under existing zoning, the Blood Center can expand and have the space it needs for its own operations. However, they have made a proposal that's before us in order to lease out several floors to commercial labs. That's essentially what's going to underwrite this project. At the same time, they've been buying blood banks across the country, from Delaware to Nebraska, Rhode Island to Minnesota. They've acknowledged that none of those transactions required a zoning change. Now, I think what's happening here is a false choice, and I want to direct these remarks to our brothers and sisters in labor. It is a false choice between life science and reasonable zoning. It is a false choice between jobs and community input, and it is a false choice between economic growth and sunlit parks. We can have all of it together, and what does that look like? I would urge the Borough President to look at the memo that George Jane supplied to the Community Board, if you haven't already. It's about thirty pages, and in it, he really goes into detail about what one alternative would look like. It could keep the RAB scale by waiving the coverage and yard requirements, keeping the heightened setback requirements that RAB provides. Under this scenario, the above-grade portion of the Blood Center would be fifty-four percent larger than the as-of-right building described in the application, providing an additional eighty-one thousand square feet to support the Blood Center's operations. In sum, Madam Borough President, let's demand that the NYBC live within existing zoning. Let's say no to zoning for dollars. Let's say no to this false choice. And finally, I think this whole discussion should be reserved for the next city council. Why are we asking a lame duck city council to vote on a proposal that is fundamentally flawed? We should have the Blood Center and the developer come back to the Community Board, work in good faith with the community, come back with a proposal that works. Let's discuss this in twenty-twenty-two in a good faith way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Borough President.
Thank you very much. Sarah Shapiro, and then Lowe Vanderwijk, and then Bommy Kim, and then Melissa Mitchell. Sarah? Lowe Vanderwijk, come on up. I don't see Sarah Shapiro here. And then Bommy Kim.
My name, my name is Lowe Vanderwijk. I represent Carnegie Hill Neighbors. We're a community on the Upper East Side that's maybe about a mile away from this project, but we're affected because this is really a question about zoning, and, and, and we are concerned about the, those issues and the precedent it might send. RAB zoning was adopted in the mid, in nineteen eighty-five for the Upper East Side and around the same time, a bit earlier, Upper West Side and elsewhere in Manhattan and the city. And it, it was the major change of the zoning resolution adopted in nineteen sixty-one, and it has survived, and it has, it has created a balance that we all welcome and recognize, and that's the balance between the low-scale mid-blocks and the taller, and the taller avenue buildings that allow for a higher density. And this balance, this project upsets that balance and represents a real challenge to the future of a livable city. And therefore, we hope that, we hope that careful consideration can be made to find a more reasonable compromise, as outlined, for example, in George Jane's study, and, and also a reading of the CBA Resolution, which is very comprehensive and in-depth and gives great guidance to how we might proceed from here on in. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much. Bommy Kim, and then Melissa Mitchell.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for this opportunity. My name is Bommy Kim. I'm the Vice President for MWB Services, McKissick and McKissick. This evening, I'm testifying on behalf of Sharon McKissick, President of McKissick and McKissick. We are the nation's oldest black and women-owned design and construction management firm founded in seventeen ninety-six, with offices in New York and Philadelphia. For over a century, under the leadership of five generations of the McKissick family, we have been part of transformative projects like the Carnegie Library at Fisk University. like the Carnegie Library at Fisk University, the 99th Squadron Air Base, the historic home of Tuskegee Airmen, as well as current projects like Coney Island Hospital, rebuilding of the World Trade Center, and the new Terminal 1 at JFK. These projects, like Center East, Project Before a Spurt Economic Development and Job Creation. We are pleased to support this important and revitalizing project that will enhance New York City's ability to be a leader in the life sciences field. In addition, we commend both New York Blood Center and Longfellow Real Estate Development for their pledge to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Our partners have committed that the development, construction, and operation of Center East will reflect the diversity of New York City. As a partner in this endeavor, McKissick will play a vital role in ensuring that minority woman firms and minority woman workforce will be meaningfully engaged. This undertaking will generate 1,570 construction jobs and $1.1 billion in total economic output. We believe that the benefits of this project can be and should be equally felt by all New Yorkers. This is an opportunity to bring employment and business opportunities that are both high-paying and high-skill. As New York City reemerges from the pandemic, we must ensure that we are taking advantage of our existing world-class health and scientific institutions like the New York Blood Center to forge a brand-new and innovative future. As an African-American firm, we are especially heartened by the NYBDC's leadership in sickle cell and immune research that disproportionately impact people of Black or African-American descent. The groundbreaking research that will be done at Center East will alleviate pain of 459 million people worldwide. The proximity to other world-class institutions like Memorial Stone Kettering, Rockefeller University, and Wild Cornell Medicine will allow New York City and New York Blood Center to be a scientific innovator. McKissick and McKissick is committed to insustaining a cultural legacy in this rapidly changing times and facing all challenges. Oliver Wendell Jones once stated, "The great thing in the world is not so much where we stand, as in what direction we are moving." McKissick and McKissick is committed to moving forward, and we recognize that life is change and growth is optional. We feel we have wisely chosen growth as an option, and we are due to do the same. Thank you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on support of the Center.
Thank you very much, and thank you for waiting such a long time. Melissa Mitchell?
Thank you, Borough President.
Thank you. You need to move it up because you're so tall. There you go, perfect.
Thank you so much for coming, and I'm really grateful for this opportunity to speak with you. I am a local resident, and I live on 65th Street. And I've been here for a decade. And let me tell you that I vehemently oppose this project. And I will tell you, as a person that personally experienced the impact of lack of sunlight, you are dealing with children at Talented Unlimited. We're talking, people want to talk about Black and Brown children. And as a minority myself, let me tell you, those kids are going to have a mental health crisis if their sunlight is taken away in the name of a construction project. And I will say that in terms of jobs, and a lot of people have already emptied out, there are a lot of jobs right now. I don't know if anyone's been checking out CNN, Bloomberg. Actually, they're struggling to get people to go back to work. So when people say there's no jobs, there are actually plenty of jobs.
I think they're talking about construction jobs are harder, but keep going. You're right, construction jobs are hard. I'm aware, I know. Go ahead, Melissa, go ahead.
Anyway, what I'm just saying is, I just feel that while people are so focused on diversity and inclusion, I feel like that this project is not necessarily the way to engage that opportunity. And I'm just going to leave it at that. And I know, one more thing, too, is when people say jobs, yes, there are jobs for, as you said, construction, carpenters. But also with COVID, I don't know if anyone's noticed. From my personal observation, I could be wrong. I saw a lot of vacancy throughout Manhattan. Because I had a job during COVID for a few months, and it required me to travel all throughout Manhattan, from Harlem to FIDI. And I will tell you, there were so many places sitting empty and boarded up, unfortunately. So there are other places to take this. And as a resident here, this is a beautiful neighborhood that I feel like it'd be a shame if it's blocked by a commercial business on a residential street. So, and that's one thing I love about the Upper East Side. There is a sense of home. It's not a cold financial place, so, all right. Well, I don't want to take up any more time, but thank you so much.
Thank you very much, all right, thank you. So Melissa Mitchell was the last speaker who signed up. Is there anybody else who wants to speak? Otherwise, what I'll say is, I want to thank each and every person who participated. I particularly want to thank our Assemblymember Rebecca Seabright, who stayed with me the whole time. And I want to thank Michael for putting this together as part of our urban land use team in the Manhattan Borough President's office. But more importantly, thank you all, and this has been very helpful. I think we have, even though those of us who participated in meetings previously, every little bit of information is part of what the process is and helps us inform our application response. Thank you all very much, and good night.